Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Looks like we have a great crowd to find out a little bit more about Leader and Me. But before we go to that, I'm calling the Monday, December 16th, 2024 Education Operations Committee Meeting to Order. I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of November 25th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And right away, Agenda Item Number Three, River View Principal Sarah Bundy will give a brief update on the exciting things happening at River View Elementary. And I know they're exciting because I can tell by the faces of your students, they're excited to be here. So, welcome.
All right. Thank you, and good evening. I'm Sarah Bundy, the principal at River View. And with me, I have Renee Kressel and Becky Moe. And they are two of our staff members who have coordinated the Student Lighthouse Team this year. So before we bring the kids up, though, we just wanted to do a quick introduction. And then we'll save the best for last. We'll bring them up when we're done. So before the students come up, I just wanted to point out real quickly that over the summer and the beginning of the year, our staff did review our vision and our mission. It was a little bit, it's been several years. And I just wanted to point out that the bolded and underlined in both of those, there's an element of student leadership. And while we are implementing or we have implemented Leader and Me, it's a very big part of our identity at River View to provide opportunities for our students to grow in their leadership skills and capabilities.
Again, I am Becky Moe. I am one of the fourth grade teachers at River View. And Renee and I partnered up to be the staff representatives for our Student Lighthouse Team. So you can see on the board, those are all of our lighthouse members here at River View. And we just have a few with us tonight. So last year, we decided we would start our Student Lighthouse Team. And we sent out some applications. And we had over 30 students apply to be on our lighthouse team, which blew us out of the water. We were really proud to see that. So selecting just a few was definitely a challenge, but very rewarding. And we noticed right away, once we, these students applied and we selected them, they were eager and so excited to get started with their work right away. And we get to just land up, "Hold on, kids, we'll get to that good stuff." So they are just so excited to be true leaders and be recognized as leaders. So we're really excited to have this at our school. And we meet with them about twice a month. We meet either over our lunch break or over at the end of the day. We try to meet for about 15 to 20 minutes. And we just talk about things going on at our school and what we can do better. And, oh my goodness, these leaders have so many brilliant ideas. We just love hearing their ideas. So, kind of, for me. We'll go to the next slide. So some of their big rocks and big ideas that they came up with, you can see on the screen, they really wanted to work on assemblies, World Kindness Day, and Be Amazing, daily announcements, and spirit days. So we kind of took those on as our big rocks this year. And our student leaders who are here, they're going to give you a little bit more detail about those big rocks that we've been working on.
My name is Emmett. And every month, our school gathers for an assembly to talk about the Leader and Me habit we have been focusing on for the month. Our Student Lighthouse Team has helped out with the assemblies in many ways. Prior to the assemblies, we help monitor the hallways. We greet the students as they walk into the assembly and, I mean, walk into the gym and remind them of a zero voice level and safe feet while they're walking into the assembly. When in the gym, we help start the assembly by leading the Road Runner clap. We are going to teach you the Road Runner clap. Road Runners, ready. You could try it with us now. Road Runners, ready. We also sometimes help with other parts of the assemblies. For example, at our last assembly, we helped remind the students of the assembly expectations.
My name is Cora. And one of our goals for our Student Lighthouse Team has been to promote kindness in our school. We have achieved that in a few ways so far this year. November 13th was World Kindness Day, and our lighthouse team wanted to spread kindness through our school that day.
And we came up with many ideas to promote kindness. And we ultimately decided on using kindness tickets. Staff members were given tickets to give to students that were demonstrating kindness throughout the day. Students put their name on the tickets and turned them in for a chance to earn lunch with a staff member of their choice. The tickets that were collected were then displayed on a bulletin board to show how much kindness was spread on that one day.
Hi, my name is Caroline. And additionally, a local organization called Be Amazing provided us with funds to purchase snacks for our learners in need. In November, we met one morning before school to sort and distribute snacks for 17 classrooms. Throughout the school year, we will continue to distribute more snacks and be able to provide over 900 snacks to students to help keep them energized and ready to learn.
My name is Tristan. At River View, Mrs. Bundy records and shares video announcements every day. We sometimes help her with recording the lunch menu, birthdays, and special events. Our announcement groups have to be proactive to find a common time to meet together, write a script, record the clip, and then share it with Miss Bundy. This has been a learning process for everyone, but we have had fun being part of the announcements and helping Miss Bundy.
My name is Ella. And we decided it was important to add more spirit days to our calendar this year in order to make our students and staff feel more like a family. Every month, we decide on two to three dress-up days, like everything Pumpkin Day, Silly Sock Day, and a whole month of dress-up days for December. It was always so fun to see so many Road Runners dressed up in the same theme. Any questions?
Just one observation. Did someone say that you could, as a reward, you could get a ticket and then have lunch with a staff member of your choosing?
Yes.
That's really nice. I remember when I was your age, I used to have lunch with staff members, mainly the principal, and it definitely was not a reward. So I'm glad to see things have come full circle for you guys. That's really nice.
What was today's dress-up?
Um, the French day.
Exactly. Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Nice.
Very nice.
Do you have any other questions for them?
No. You guys all did a great job.
I'm just going to say one thing. I am very impressed with how all of you understand how to use a microphone. Most adults don't know how to do that. You did a tremendous job. I could hear everything that you were saying, so thank you very much. Tremendous. Good job, guys. Well, since we don't have any speakers this evening, we're going to skip over Agenda Item Number Four and go right to Five. Chuck Rieger from Hawkins Ash CPAs will present to the Board the results of the Wasau School District, June 30th, 2024 audited financial statements. Thank you very much for being here.
Go ahead. Jim stole my thunder.
Okay. I can't understand why they didn't want to stay for the audit. Boggles my mind, but they'll get wiser as they get older. Okay, I'm going to just spend a few minutes going over the report for this year. And if you got questions, you want to chime in as we go along, that would be fine. We'll save them to the end. First off, let's go to page three. Okay, this is the independent audits report. And I always like to mention this at any presentations I do. It is independent. We are independent with regards to the district. Other than you paying us a fee to do your audit, we have no other connection with you. Notice the first part of the report is the opinions. And it used to be that was kind of buried in the report. A few years back, they'd said, "Well, we should really put it up front so people know what they're getting." And the opinion is in the second paragraph. The company and financial statements present fairly in all material respects, financial position, governing activities, basic of the school district. It's all material respects. We didn't look at 100% of the transactions, but we look at enough to make themselves comfortable that the numbers that are there are good. Okay? After that, a couple of paragraphs on responsibilities of management. You may not realize it, but you do have responsibilities as management for these reports, and we have responsibilities to audit them. Okay? Going to the next page. The only thing I'm going to note here is like the fifth bullet there, some of the stuff that we have to do because of the audit. And the last one is conclude whether, in our judgment, there are conditions or events that would raise doubt about a going concern. Okay? There is no doubt that you can be around here, from my opinion, that you can be in existence next year. Okay? I have, in all my time in auditing, which is 38 years, I think I've issued this twice where we had some doubt about them being around the next year. And in both instances, they were. So they were viable. It just, there was factors that we had to put it in. So now, if we want to skip to the page six, this is management discussion analysis. And this is put together by Noel and his staff. Noel, your district is one of the few that I do where we don't, we don't put this together and get the approval of the district. It's kind of, some of it's kind of boilerplate language, but in your case, they prepare this for us based on the information that we give them. So it's helpful. They dig into it pretty thoroughly and then give you details on why my stuff is going up, down, sideways. Okay? Items to note, your long-term liabilities down this year, mostly because of regular debt payments that you made. And then your WRS liability. Now, those of you that have been on the board for a few years, I recognize a few familiar faces. The WRS is your Wisconsin Retirement System. And if they are overfunded, which means they have more assets than they expect to pay out in payments, you would have an asset on the books. This year, you, the WRS is underfunded. Not unusual, it fluctuates between overfunding and underfunding. But over the course of the last 10 years, it's never been more than 5% underfunded or more than 6% overfunded. So they keep an eye on that, and it's all based on investment performance and contributions. Well, between '23's audit and '24's audit, markets went up. So the underfunding was a smaller percentage this year, which means your liability that you would owe, let's say if WRS went out of business, you would have to pony up some money, went down by like $13 million. Okay? Now, again, that's not a liability that you're going to have to pay because the WRS is one of the best retirement programs in the entire nation. Okay? And it's just market fluctuations that cause the underfunding and overfunding. Other items to note, you can see in the next second bullet point there, talking about the fund balance decreasing $26 million. It seems like a big number, and you say, "Wow, we overspent by $26 million." Well, not really. The majority of that is due to your bond proceeds that you got, you're building an improvement program. You know, you borrowed about $100 million, actually almost $120 million, and you're spending that down. So when you borrow the money, it goes in as revenue, and you have a lot of fund balance. As you spend it down, you don't have much money coming in, other than interest earnings. And you're obviously building buildings, making improvements, and that's to be expected. So there's quite a large percentage of that decrease was due to that. But the one thing I want to point out to you, general fund, fund balance, that wasn't a stutter, was about 24% of your one-year's expenses. Okay? Districts that we do out of our management office, and we do own 20 of them, the percentages range from about 15% for low and about 44% for high. Okay? Now, the 44%, they were kind of stockpiling some money because they knew they were going to have underfunding for several years in the future. Most of the time, most of my districts are right around that 20% to 25%. DPI does not recommend a percentage, but most of my district and most, I would say, prudent school districts are looking to shoot around 20% or 25% of that. So you're right in the ballpark for that. After that, way down at the bottom, if you go back just a little bit, right there is the long-term liabilities. I had mentioned the net position, okay, went down $13 million. And then you paid off $6.5 million of debt. After that, the next several pages are standard disclosures. If you want to go to page 10, it's got a chart on it right there. This shows your assets and liabilities. And then something called deferred outflows of resources. That's going to be an asset in the future, or deferred inflows are going to be liabilities in the future. So again, you can see there's a Wisconsin Retirement System pension and deferred inflow. There's also some of that in the deferred outflows. Again, it's not something that you're going to have to come up with at a point in time. It's all calculated by the actuaries, and it decreases and increases over a long period of time. You still have a good net position at the bottom there, $155 million. If you go one more page, this shows your revenues that are coming in. This would be page 11. Your revenues that are coming in, you can see most of it comes in via property taxes and state aid formulas. You do have some operating grants contributions that typically, okay, first off, charges for services is mostly your food service for what you charge students. The operating grants contributions, Title I programming, ESU funding, you know, COVID funds, and ID or handicapped aid. As you know, the COVID money is basically done now, so that number will be smaller next year, the $13 million will be smaller. And then property taxes and state aid formulas principally probably $60-some million in categorical aid, you know, based on your expenses and your property value. And then the expenses, you can see instruction, pupil instructional services. And instruction is the biggest percentage. Obviously, it should be the business administration, central services, that's debt services in there, food services in there. Now, remember, the instruction number is really pure instruction cost. Okay? Principally salary and benefits. But you know, all those other areas are needed to be effective for instruction. Just because it doesn't show up as an instruction, it's really supporting services for that. Okay, if we go to page 13, kind of shows some pie charts there for where you get your revenues and where you spend your money. We covered that, the instruction, 50%. State and general aid in the lower pie chart, 55%. With property taxes coming in around 30. All these numbers are very similar from your deal for you. After that, there's some information on budget variances. I suspect you're well aware of budget numbers up and down, given that it's the Operational Committee. So one thing to point out, interest on investments. If you dig into the details of the statements, it's a big number this year. Well, you say, "Wow, I didn't realize we made it." Most of it is in the, again, in the Capital Projects Fund, where when you do a project, you borrow a lot of money, you can make a lot of interest on $100 million in a year. Okay? Particularly now with the rates being up. That being said, a lot of that is already factored into your budget and building plans. You expect to make some return on your investment before you spend it. So it's not like it's free money. But suffice to say, the return on investment from a interest income standpoint is much higher than it would have been, let's say, five years ago. And some information on capital assets and long-term debt. I touched on that stuff earlier. You can see, if you go to page 15 right at the top, your capital assets, big number in construction and progress, went from $18 million to $58 million. And that will get to be a big number, and at some point, we will break that out to individual projects that are completed. Now, we're not going to go down to $1,000 here and $5,000 there. It's going to be bigger type, okay, building improvements here, HVAC there. So after that, just some talk about your debt and your mill rates and factors bearing on the district's future. You know, the biggest thing with, like, all my districts is funding formula and decreasing enrollment, open enrollment in and out, all that kind of stuff. Voucher schools, private school, having, reducing your funds because private school kids are sucking up some of that money. Okay? But it's kind of across the state. We do districts, you, as far north as, let's say, Rib Lake, as far south as Mcgiggle, McWanego area. And it's the same, it's the same concerns, for the most part, for many of the districts. Now, that's a brief snapshot of this. I can go into more detail on some of that stuff, which is detailed later on in the footnotes. I don't think there's anything that's earth-shaking now. You have a fair amount of debt, but you, it's, it's, over the years, you've done some good work on paying off debt early so that you have some flexibility from a borrowing perspective.
Any questions?
I think we kind of joke every year that if we ever have a negative audit, we'll have a lot more questions and a lot longer discussions. So let's hope we can just keep joking about that every year and not have to have that discussion.
I understand. And your staff here is really top-notch. You know, I know Josh has just been here for a couple of years, but I think you made a really good hire. You know, Bob was a good hire, and he had some big shoes to fill. And from my perspective, he's doing a good job with that.
I want that costume. A lot.
No. Remember, we said we were independent.
I think it was built into the expense account here. Well, Josh, anything to add?
No, just that we'd like to thank Chuck and his team for all the work that they do with us, along with the business office. They do a fantastic job. So that's it.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you for being here and presenting to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board the approval of the 2023-2024 audit report as presented.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Six, CISA 10 will present the results of the elementary building asset and all the trees that have been killed to bring us all of this.
Just a light read there.
Done a lot of it digitally already, so, well done.
Appreciate it. We'll just start with a quick introduction.
Can you hear me? Okay. Brief introductions here. My name's Tony Menard. I'm a facility advisor with CISA 10. Been working at CISA for almost 10 years now. And I started as a project manager, moved into the facility advisor role here a couple years ago. And it's been a privilege so far to work with Kale and his team, and Ryan and his team on this assessment for you. And let the other guys here introduce themselves quick.
Sure. My name is Nate Carell. I'm a project manager with CISA 10 also. I worked for CISA for 15 years, I think. Been working quite a bit longer than that, and he's been working quite a bit longer than I. I did the majority of the interior auditing piece and electrical, mechanical type stuff, and John did the bulk of the exterior.
Hi, John Burgett. I've been with CISA for 18 years. I've been in facilities management for 44 years. Done a lot of work in schools. Very impressed with what you guys have here and what you've done. Like all the districts we've worked with, there's a lot more to be done, and hopefully this report will help with that.
All right. I'll do just a quick background on CISA 10's facilities management as a whole before Nate and John jump into the assessment. But we've had a facilities management department at CISA 10, which is located in Chippewa Falls since the early 90s. And we've been able to serve more than 200 schools annually. And a lot of that comes from our EHS department, which is Environmental Health and Safety, where they go around and assist schools on their asbestos regulations and things like that, making sure that they're staying up to date on the regulations with that, but also helping out with asbestos abatement projects. What we are here for is the facility assessment or facility audit that we were asked to come in and do for the 13 elementary schools. We also have construction management services as well as owner's rep that really pair well with our referendum planning. I believe we have done roughly $80 million in the last couple of years of referendum projects. And as I touched on it earlier, our environmental health and safety, I believe we have, I think, five or six EHS staff located throughout the state that assists the over 200 schools that we're helping out with, on top of our other projects that we're handling from construction management, owner's rep, or working on, you know, two to three facility audits at a time throughout the year. So we'll move on then to just the overall guts of the assessment, and I'll let Nate and John take it from here.
Sure. Thanks, Tony. So, yeah, as Tony said, this page that we have up here is really the entire book on a single page in dollars. Like John said when he introduced himself, you guys have a bunch of really nice schools. We do this all over the state, and this is, was a breath of fresh air, really, in regards to what we've been auditing lately. I'd like to kind of skip over, breeze over this slide and come back to it, because I'm hoping that this slide has questions from you all. I really hope that by the end of, by the time we're done talking, you have questions, because that's really the only way that any good information comes out. I mean, the best way to get good information out from what you're wondering. So we break apart the schools into a one-to-two, a three-to-five, and a five-to-10-year plan from our best estimates, and then compile everything over on the side. And then compile everything over on the side. And one note I'd like to make is these are construction cost estimates. So we have not put in additional costs into these that will need to take place for fees and construction management and permitting. And we have a long entry list of other things. So. You can go ahead. Facilities improvement budget, this slide depicts, as we audited, audited the schools, the elementary schools. You were in a spot where the results of the facilities advisory committee were not completely out. Or the community advisory committee were not completely out. The way we looked at this is if a particular school, in our opinion, needed something, needed these items, they're all spelled out here. We put them in it and estimated it. So it did not take into account anything like X school may close. And why it would bring two hundred kids to Y school. Those types of thoughts are not in these plans. It's just what was missing from the existing facilities. Okay. And then these next few slides, I'll try to breeze through quickly. And really the intention here is just if, hopefully some of you have looked at the report to a certain extent. But just to give you an example of how the report itself works. I talked about that conglomerate slide that brings everything together. And then the bulk of all these pages is what the rest of this is. So school by school, we start with a cover page that just gives you cursory information, the year it was built, the size of the school, square footage and electric use. We do a more detailed school by school, electrical or energy in general, gas and electric usage data is there. And then this is a page of one of the, this is, this is Franklin, but one page out of the audit where we call these individual FIMs, facility improvement measures. Some are very large, some are very small. But an example, each FIM gets a picture, a cost, a description and a recommendation. So. And then at the end of each individual school section, we compile each school for a one to two, a three to five. And then a five to ten, and then the individual school upgrades that we put in. Okay, so you can go back to that. Yep, thanks. So before we open it up, any questions? And John may have a few comments. But the points I'd want to make on this main slide are that, where I said, and I meant it, that you have a bunch of schools that are in really good shape. What's lacking in this district is a lot of schools need roofing projects. And about six schools need major HVAC renovations. So I just had my own spreadsheet here to give you a few ideas. But approximately of your total twenty-seven and a half million, one to ten year plan, approximately seventeen million is either roofing or large-scale HVAC at six schools, some of those schools possibly destined for closure. So sixty percent of that total is roofing and mechanical. So you'll notice besides for Riverview, we try to put things that we see, and we didn't see a heck of a lot of them in this district. This really needs to get done. Those are the one to two-year items. And then realistically, it's hard to not combine in my own mind, knowing how projects get done. That one to five-year plan is more critical where the five to ten can probably be pushed a little, a few years down. So.
I guess the only thing I really wanted to add is typically we go into a district looking for these facility improvement measures, putting a recommendation together in order of priority and then cost. And when we're invited in, the question that's right, right in front of us all the time is how do we use the report? Again, you've got a couple hundred pages here that you got to dig through. We kind of did things in reverse for Wasaw. And to say that, I need to explain that when we first came in and we were looking at the elementaries, we were coming in as a third party to take a snapshot and hopefully assist the citizens committee as they were toiling through their project and their primary objective. Inside of that, all of the larger project planning that Ryan and his department may be looking at fall out. And then inside of that, all of these little individual measures that we're recommending are taken care of. Something as simple as, you know, a safety measure for adding a piece of fire alarm or something like that comes out. So when you look at this and when you have to digest it, understand that it was kind of a funnel that got us down to all of these individual items. Now that we have all those items to use this report fully, it can support what your citizens group is working on. It can support what you're doing with your year-to-year, five, ten-year planning. But also it can support the immediate needs that need to be taken care of by the maintenance department. So please consider use of this report holistically for all of those things, not just why we first came in or what we now have with this very long list of to-dos for the maintenance department. So I guess with that, we'd like to just open up questions if there's anything specific that you might want to ask about or how the, how the report is defined, laid out. Your questions are really valuable in making use of this report as well.
I'm going to open it up to the board. We did get this a while back, to at least look at it digitally and that. There's all, I'm sure, a lot of questions. So I'll open it up to board members first.
I've got just a couple. First of all, this is really, really impressive, what you guys put together. I see number of these almost every month, it seems like in my day job, and this is extremely helpful. I may steal some of this formatting too, by the way. So. So in the macro picture, if I'm looking at this correctly, so there's the deferred maintenance buckets for all of the elementaries. Everything all in, twenty-seven and a half million dollars. If, and I want to qualify that as a big if, the original, I think bundle B or what, A or B or whatever it was that was put forth by the, by the task force was Grant Hawthorne Hills and Hewitt, Texas. So that would back off four point one million of the deferred maintenance, taking us down to roughly twenty-three, four, somewhere in there. By thinking, I mean, that's linear, right? There's no, these aren't related or tied in or dependent on one another. It's just what that specific building needs. Okay? And so then with the standardization upgrades, whether it's furniture fixture and equipment, I'm assuming is the FFNE.
Yep.
Or AC minor renovations, et cetera. That is twenty-six million in the aggregate, but if you back out those same schools, we're down about ten and a half million. Original total would be about fifty-three million minus if we did not do those schools, the fourteen. So we'd be down to roughly thirty-nine million all in if you looked at one through ten deferred maintenance and all of the standardization upgrades. My thing.
You analyze that very well.
Okay. For some reason.
Plus the other fees and that kind of thing, architectural fees and project fees, that kind of thing. Yeah.
Any additional changes that wouldn't become from, for example, upgrades to Lincoln from four K to five K here, anything like that, again, using your big yes or moving the kids around?
Yep. Changing, changing the layout of Lincoln or repurposing that as a four K, probably on your, on your second page, right on page seven, wouldn't, wouldn't be the same thing of what you guys identified. Would have to have a complete project created and a new price created for that. Yeah.
That's correct. Yeah. That, that'd be the only point, Pat, to what you were saying and how, anything that could sway that. If, if you were to say two hundred kids are going to go into Riverview or something like that. That's not something we took into account if, if a piece of one of those.
You guys didn't look at capacity issues. You just looked at building itself, what's there today?
Like one of the examples we looked at is if Franklin became four K, there wouldn't be as great a need to have a separate cafeteria area as there is. Or Lincoln, I'm sorry, Lincoln, as there is if it's a, if it's an elementary school.
Just for clarity, when we contracted with these guys, we had asked them to look at this assessment independent of any type of elementary task force. So they looked at our entire footprint without any consideration because we wanted to be transparent and neutral in that situation and not influence. We were waiting for the task force to make some decisions before we involve them.
Just give me a little review on the numbers. You know, I can take a look at all of these numbers and we can add these up if we eliminate this building and that building and things of that fashion. Obviously, you're taking numbers on today's construction, taking a look at it as close as you can. You know, you take a look at Hewitt, Texas and the multipurpose space, minor renovation, FFNE. You know, I'm sure the money or the, the numbers came from specific costs it would be in order to do that, correct?
Yeah, we, we give each facility improvement measure a general scope. I mean, there's an opportunity for the district to, you know, get elaborate and exceed that scope or maybe go, you know, bare bones and try to stay under a scope. But we try to use what we've identified as a general average for scope cost. Just again, to keep it as flat and as third-party and as comparable as possible. The nice thing about this report is you're internally looking at it. So your standards are all set within the internal district versus you comparing yourself to maybe another suburban school or someone that you may be in more direct competition with. So that, that makes it very nice because building to building, we've used the same parameters and the same scales of measurement, which, which makes it a lot cleaner.
That's good to know, you know, identifying where the numbers came from. As we look at it, we can just look at the numbers, that's all I'm seeing. But where did they come from is the biggest things, you know?
Is, if, on that same issue, if we had a, let's say, one of the projects is to add a cafeteria or to do extensive HVAC or something big, is there a way for us to sort of ballpark what those extra fees would be, project manager, architectural, you know, the design work? The, you know, a way for us to sort of estimate that on a percentage basis or any way for us to figure out what the actual cost would be?
Yeah. What I would tell you in this room is that, you know, it will, it will get more refined and you'll get a better number as you go down the road. What I would say is fifteen percent would be very low and twenty-five percent would be high. And I encourage you to use about twenty, one point two.
Okay.
You make a good point because of the fact that architectural drawings and how elaborate you're going to be and specific is going to cost a little bit different as well.
Well, because we're having, we've been having referendum discussions. And we had discussions in the past with some of this stuff already on a planned referendum that we then took away with, with bigger numbers than this. And I think one of the reasons for the numbers being bigger at that time were some of those extra costs. But if we're going to have continued discussions and talk about possible referendum, it's going to be helpful for us to use, I don't want to say realistic, but closer to end numbers than what these are.
Kind of like what you mentioned, just looking at the scope and we can elaborate on this a little bit more. But, you know, when you look at this, there's some FIMs in here where, you know, if we have twenty-seven million in deferred maintenance, there could be five, six million dollars of this deferred maintenance that could just be turned over to Ryan and his staff to manage and use at their own ability. Because the, you know, there's a thousand dollars, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar type projects where you're not necessarily going to need a construction manager. You're not necessarily going to need a design team to manage that stuff. So when you take a look at all these FIMs and you get prepared for those questions down the road, those are things to think of where, you know, you can sit with Ryan and kind of go through those, what him and his staff feel comfortable with. So that hopefully that makes that dollar amount when you have to get to have those conversations even more refined and smaller at that point, too.
I'm glad you said thousand-dollar examples because since our budget is about one point four million total for the year, one point something for the whole year, you can quickly see why when we start looking at this number is the word referendum comes up.
Hey, one other question I had was, so the, the one to two-year, obviously that, that can be interpreted as higher priority items. Do you have, I didn't see it in the document, but maybe it's embedded somewhere. Is there a priority within that one to two-year that you guys would recommend in terms of a roof that is, you know, imminent failure? Which is probably too strong of a word. But is there a way to prioritize that one to two-year, seven point four million?
I think you need to look at the individual measures and one of the sequential impacts, and I could use Riverview as an example. The roof and your HVAC situation, they work hand in hand. So.
And that's the one to two-year number, right? Those two things together? Okay.
So you fall into a higher priority, looking at the other measure that's impacted by what might even be a more costly or a primary measure, if that makes sense. And it gets kind of complicated, but again, I like your explanation. So you look at Riverview and you see a high deferred amount in the one to two-year. But after that, you see a very low amount and what needs to be added for that to be a functional school. So some of it actually balances itself out, even in the building, when you look at when you make the investment and then what you end up with for an operating school.
And in something like Riverview with an HVAC system, is your recommendation based more on efficiency of a system or effectiveness of the system?
At Riverview, it's kind of an animal on its own. I would say both in that case through conversations with staff, with Ryan's team. At Riverview, it's really about, I don't know, I'd encourage you all to look at it from Google Earth. Riverview looks a lot more like a plastics fabricating manufacturing facility than an elementary school.
There's an idea for revenue.
And all the penetrations go through the roof. There's hundreds of them. So my goal would be to get that mechanical off of the roof and just have to deal with a roof rather than a mechanical system on a roof. So it's multiple in that case, multiple different things. It's pretty inefficient gas-wise. It's roughly average in electric.
And then in your, go ahead.
I was just going to say, don't forget to add the condition of the roof is very bad. So to fix the roof, I have to get underneath all of that HVAC. How do I do that? You know, do I just, you know, lift it, repair it, lay it back down and now replace the HVAC? Or do I take care of the problem and back up both of those measures?
So you're, you're looking at everything and in fact that in most buildings, especially school buildings, when you try to create that envelope and, and well insulated and talk about the different furnaces, the redundancies that there are now out there that, you know, if one goes down, the next one kicks in as efficient as what the first one is. And some schools are going three, four redundancies to make sure that they can cover it. When you gave numbers on that, are you looking at the highest and the most quality? Or with digital background and all of that kind of stuff? Or are we taking a look at the minimal to take care of it as well? So it's kind of tying it together with also the numbers because it does vary in what we would do.
Yes, in the cases, excuse me, in all the cases of what I'm calling major HVAC replacement of those six schools, and it's really more five than six. I'm estimating based on doing a lot of past projects in this sphere, replacing the bulk of the system. Anything that's past twenty years old. And in the cases of Lincoln Franklin, a lot of the equipment is fifty-plus years old. So some of it's based on age. Typical HVAC equipment, we usually give, you know, maybe a twenty, twenty-five year on mechanical operating equipment and thirty, thirty-five years on air handlers. And some of this stuff is twice its age that we were expected to last. So.
Did you guys have access? Did you guys have access to the energy efficiency audit that Nexus did for us a few years back?
We had access to an old Nexus audit, but I don't necessarily know energy efficiency.
Probably more of a curiosity question, just in terms of if anything, did you guys identify anything that was not on that report? Because the ages that you're talking about were certainly exceeded back when that report was done.
Yeah.
We added, we added to that report. I mean, and again, we weren't looking at just energy efficiency measures.
Understood.
We were looking at improvement measures. We had access to their report and we were able to identify items that had been done, items that weren't done, and then items that we were adding.
Yeah, yeah.
We did try to make sure, double checking with their old list that we hadn't not put something that they had on their list that hadn't been addressed yet. So, and there were things that have been addressed on that list. I wanted to follow up on a couple of questions. Lance, when you asked about organizing, for instance, the one to two year plan, one thing that, you know, we did not, to answer your question directly, we did not do that one to twenty. This is worse, this is best. All of these sheets that you see are in spreadsheet form also and are in Ryan's hands. So for instance, you could take the one to two year column and sort it by cost and he'll see a couple of five hundred dollars and a couple of one thousand and a couple of five. I would, some of those are probably done right now. So he can check those off and kind of make your list smaller. But it really would be up to the district to decide where to focus.
A couple of them we can identify as well. When you look at Riverview, for example, you read through the report and you can see, you know, that, that's not only something that's needed just for the school right now, but it's also needed because at some point there's going to be a big problem and it, it's going to end up costing us more, you know, if we get a major leak or something like that. Two comments on this that really aren't questions, but just more for board discussion. Pat mentioned the air conditioning, HVAC inefficiency. And I'll also add that there's really an equity issue as well because we've got staff and students in seventy-two degree climate controlled rooms and others that are in ninety degree rooms at the same time. And that's not good for staff and that's not good for education for students. You don't spend all day in a room with windows that are shut all night long. And then now the way security is, our doors are closed during the day. And it's, you know, it's ninety degrees in a room in Franklin or upstairs at John Marshall. So that's a big issue that we need to consider. The other thing to point out to anyone reviewing these is if, if we were to, I know one of the discussions we've talked about in terms of school combinations is Marshall versus Hawthorne. And, and it's going to be natural for people to look at these totals and see what the costs are for each of these schools. One thing to keep in mind is the Hawthorne totals here don't include the road. And if we were, if we were to decide to move students into Hawthorne, we would probably have to put the road back on the table because it's already a problem now without the road. If we were to make it bigger, that road cost would be really big and would have to come back into these totals. Just if anybody's adding up numbers and thinking about schools and which ones quote unquote more expensive, that would be something we would have to, to think about, too.
Thanks. Yeah, just thinking off the top of my head, the only, the only school where we saw a real glaring issue with pickup drop off as it stood today was Grant. And we did put some serious dollars into their standardization upgrades for.
Yeah, and we have the cost of the road at, at Hawthorne because we actually were thinking about doing it until the, the cost got so high. I can't remember what it was, like three million dollars or something, it got really big. Yeah, three point one. So that's another big thing to add in if, if, if we're trying, trying to compare numbers for schools.
The other two things that I wanted to say to the board, taking a couple of notes here, and you just mentioned it. So I just explaining myself a little bit in this report, Ryan does know this, but I wanted to make it clear to the board as well. In the recommended standardization upgrades chart where I have add air conditioning and that's a part of that conglomerate, it's broken down in the individual school, adding air conditioning numbers in these go hand in hand with the major HVAC projects that are recommended for those schools. So I just broke out the air conditioning piece. So if somebody said, we don't care about the HVAC system, but we want to add air, the add air number is going to be higher than what I have here. So it was pretending you were doing a project. The other thing I wanted to add to what Tony was saying quite a while ago, because I made this comment fifteen to twenty-five percent, probably aim you at, at twenty percent to add to these numbers. He makes a very good point. So that would be any project that truly needs design, bid, build, an addition, for instance, that would be a good number for those. A roof project, if you want help managing the, you have a lot, basically every school in the, in the elementary portfolio needs roofing. If you wanted help managing it, that would be an X cost, but you don't need design. So that might be a five percent adder or something less. And then all the projects that Ryan can just grab and do, you don't need to add anything to. So I just wanted to clarify there.
Go ahead.
We do not have any assessment on this building or MAB.
Or our big secondary schools.
Well, secondary schools are all getting, again, we shouldn't make assumptions, but they're getting some kind of work done. And most of the deferred maintenance at least were, is being handled as a part of the referendum or no? At secondaries?
I, I guess I default to Ryan on this one for that, that question.
Yeah, and most of it was, we're at St. East, the referendum to cover the new, a new roofing project. John Muir is sitting pretty good, new, new HVAC roofing and so forth. But some of the other ones, West, there's still other, we put in new chiller, but there's still old chillers in there. So part of what we want to do, and I talked to Tony about it, is we might hit the high spots, maybe look at assessing those also moving forward. First one, take care of this, but then we have to look at the secondary schools also. But you, it, it, the, the referendum did touch a lot of the major stuff on the secondary schools. We did do nothing on Longfellow or MAB, but.
It'd be useful, I think, if we're going to be discussing, I mean, this is, this is information that's really great for the ongoing task force discussion with our elementary school. But if we're going to start talking about referendum, it would be useful to have.
The rest.
The rest of it as well.
Because we brought up before about if there's space in a different building that everybody here goes to a different building, we get rid of this property. And I brought up about food service and the MAB stuff, if that could be rolled into. Or during a building project, we simply add on a space that can handle that. So we are all on the same site, right? So we don't have another separate site to deal with. Those, those kind of ideas to have in the conversation.
Yeah, we can certainly add that to the, to the discussion, like we, Ryan had said. We're really pushing, maybe it's Lance, we're really pushing hard for the elementary side of it and then let's build on to that afterwards.
You know, it's with all the changes that we've had, new board members, the only two board members that have been here more than six years are the two sitting right here. And we've got new people in different places. I'm a historical buff, I always like to ask, what have we done in the past up to this point in time? I can't ask that question because I don't think anybody here can give me those, those answers. Going back to the turn of the century, what have we done for the last twenty-four years? This is a ten year plan looking out and I, and we're talking one, two, three, five, and then five, ten. It comes at a perfect time because of the fact that we're looking at the elementary footprint and that. But I, boy, when I think about the different roofs and the different school buildings and the different HVAC and all of that, we've got a lot of expense that is now coming to a point where we have to take a look at everything because this cost is only, only going to continue to get bigger down the road if we don't do something. As we look at our, our committee that's been in session for the last six months, bringing this together for us at this time is very helpful to take a look at it. We've got to look at a lot of economics for our district, for our taxpayers. We've got to make sure that the economics also goes hand in hand with the academics. You bring up the idea of, you know, in an elementary school that doesn't have air conditioning and you're in a room of ninety degrees. I know what it's like to teach in a classroom like that, it's not easy to keep people focused. So all of this is so very important and it's very comprehensive, I appreciate that. I just throw that out in a little bit of a summary of what we have to look at. And if there are any other questions.
Yeah, we, and we don't get, we're not funded to handle this. And so that's why we have referendum. So that's why you see districts, five years, they go up for referendum, they'll try to knock off five years of deferred maintenance. And five years later, they're going to be back talking about it again. It's not because they're not budgeting properly, it's because they, we can't budget for three point seven million dollars at Riverview. You just can't do that, not, you know, and then multiply that by twenty different locations. So, so yeah, it's just, that's part of that nat- natural cycle, we're at that, at that point again.
I, I think what this does more than anything is provide administration, frankly, and the board with talking points for that story that I keep talking about in terms of how we're going to communicate need to the community. This is completely factual, data driven, here's exactly what you get. You know, a few years ago, we had a hundred and eighty-one million dollar referendum that failed. And when we peeled off all of this and there was a few more things that came off, but we came down to the one nineteen that got approved. And, you know, if you, if you add this stuff up compared to what that one nineteen was, this is like a, a twenty-three million dollar improvement in terms of where we were between those other two referendums. I think that can tell a heck of a good story. And again, you're right, Lance, we're not funded and it's not our job to go raise the funds. I think our job is to continue to communicate with the stakeholders in the community. Here's the realistic picture, this is where we're at, here's the needs, here's what it costs. Do you want us to do it, yes or no? And, you know, they have to say. And I think the other part to that story is I know people, I've gotten a lot of comments on property taxes. The school districts went down. I think it was seven percent I saw on, on one of them. So we have a history of positive news in terms of budgeting and being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. I think we're in a really good spot from that standpoint. Unlike, you know, some of the other municipal things that go into the property tax bill around here. I think we've done a, that I think, I know we've done a great job and can use that to, you know, part of that communication plan.
I think that communication would be even better if we have the other buildings done as well. I really think that would be worth it. I think it would be worth it for Kale to look into what that would cost. And, you know, obviously we don't decide that right now because we don't even know what it costs. But to get some ideas of what that would cost and what the timeline would be, I think that would be very useful. If we're going to have this done, we might as well have full, full district.
I think that also shows respect to the elementary school task force because they came to us with the idea of Longfellow as a long-term recommendation. So I think showing that we're listening to that is only going to build that relationship.
I think the two of you just did a tremendous job in summarizing everything that we have to take a look at as a board and the fact that, you know, we, we have to take care of these things. And the question always goes back to the community and that's what referendums are, are all about. Yes, no, and, and that's what the community has to tell us what we're going to do. And then we have to communicate that.
So a couple of the other things that are on page seven, it looks, we're not identifying, or it doesn't appear we're identifying, some of the other site based things that were presented back with referendum materials. Like at Rib Mountain, there was like redoing the front driveways to make bus patterns and pickup drop off easier. But you guys probably didn't add any of that, right, to, to this? So if there's other site improvements that maybe we've looked at before in the past and, and parking lot expansion at South Mountain and, and maybe something with the driveways there, too, those things you'll have to, something you'll have to add or.
They did look at like a pickup and drop off in your opinion at Grant and you said that needed work. So if they didn't include it in Rib Mountain, it sounds like that is more of a difference of opinion rather than including it or not including it intentionally.
Yeah, you know, and we had the, or I had the luxury of seeing Grant in operation where Rib and South were not, you know, it was summer at the time when we audited, we didn't see how busy it was. But in general, this was an existing facilities, conditions audit. So both of those schools I know had bad asphalt. And I know specifically South Mountain, he put a lot of replacement in parking lot. But it wouldn't be to expand it, it would be to replace it.
The good thing is you can look at this sheet seven and identify the enhancements that we use to try to standardize school to school. So if you had other enhancements above and beyond that, you can look here to see whether we missed it or whether it's something you want to add back in.
Yeah, and I, I just bring it up for, for clarity. Just because it's, it's not here and I didn't, I don't know that you were expected to do that and, and know that. You're just fixing what we have to get us all equal between each building, that was the goal.
Any other questions, comments, summary points? You give us a lot to look at, there's no doubt about that. And I appreciate the fact that we have it digitally as well as hard copy, that we can take a look at this very specifically. This is something that is timely as we're moving forward and.
Jim, this is out there for the public to see too, right?
Go ahead.
What? This is out there for the public to see. I would highly encourage people to go look through this and see all of the projects that, you know, are in this book and all the costs that are involved with maintenance and maintaining all of our facilities. So I think it comes at a good time, obviously with our elementary task force can, you know, being responsible to taxpayers and looking at rightsizing our elementary footprint to help participate in that, in that effort, so.
The document was too large to upload to Board Book. But I was able to put a link in the agenda to the, the document itself.
I know we have two different sized versions too, and maybe we could get, if you were trying the, they're both big. So maybe we could do the smaller one.
I wonder if we couldn't try splitting that up because I know someone reached out, they had an issue trying to get into this Dropbox thing. If, if we just broke it into, I don't know what it would take, four or five separate documents. You know, how many pages each, that may help.
Especially if we're going to be adding to it.
Appreciate it. A lot to ruminate over, that's for sure, thank you. That was informational for us, agenda item number seven. Ms. Cartledge will present the open enrollment space determinations for 2025, 2026.
I'm going to speak for Wendy, she wasn't able to make it tonight. This is pretty, is a pretty straightforward report. You guys have this every year when we talk about open enrollment. It's broken into two separate situ-, or two separate scenarios. There's the general education open enrollment and the special education open enrollment. We're seeing no changes this year from previous years. Our open enrollment for general education has no limit. So we, we haven't put any type of limitation on that. From a special education perspective, we have put limitations on it and we have not allowed open enrollment. And in general, the reason for that one is a lot of the shortage that we have in special education, the costs associated with it. At this point, we, we have to contract for programs such as OT or PT because we can't find folks for that. So that's exclusionary for us, that allows us to close open enrollment for students. They still will maintain a waiting list for kids who are interested in that area. But again, it's consistent with what we've done in the years past, open enrollment's open for general education, it'll be closed for our special education students.
Let me put the motion out there and then we can ask questions. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the regular and special education non-resident spaces available under open enrollment for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented or as spoken. Are there any questions about that? Are we pretty much satisfied in what we've seen in the past? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I'm going to seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I'm going to call a special meeting of December sixteenth to order. I'm seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss approved administrator contracts under Statute nineteen point eight-five, one C. This will be roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Sarah Brock?
Yes.
John Krieger?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Corey Solars?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.